Turn it off. You gotta use the button up on the bar. They'll, in the center.
All right, we're all good?
Can you still see them?
Yeah. It's all good, it's all good. Okay, Ms. Karen, you want to start? Or no, no, I'm sorry, this, uh, my father's again. Did you promise to write?
Right, I've called government operations to order. We have a present, uh, excuse me, a presentation tonight and call for a public hearing.
Mom Harvey.
We're calling the government operations committee to order. We have a presentation this evening and we're calling for a public hearing on the D S A D, D S I C district expansion because downtown is getting big.
Downtown is getting bigger.
Mr. Solango.
Thank you very much. Um, I, I'm Jim Solango. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the executive director of the Downtown Connected Initiative Corporation. And, uh, for, uh, a while now, our board has been exploring, uh, the possibility of expanding our service area, uh, in Downtown Connected. Thanks in large part to all the wonderful things that are happening, um, outside the boundaries of our current service area. But before we do anything like that, it's important for us to share the information with you, the city council, because ultimately, uh, the city council will be voting on the boundaries, uh, of the expansion. And also, it's important for us, well, I'll give you a little bit more information, but it's also important that all the property owners and the businesses that would be affected by any of the changes are well informed and have all the information they need about a lot of our programs. So just, um, to give you a little background and make sure you understand what the Downtown Connected Initiative Corporation or D S I C is, uh, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, uh, and we provide supplemental programs and services for the property owners and the businesses, uh, here in Downtown Connected. And our service area is roughly, uh, the central business district of Connected. Um, and I'll get, I'll get to an actual map of the boundaries as we talk about that in just a moment. But to again, uh, get, make you a little bit more familiar about everything that we do, we have a wide variety of programs and services that we provide to downtown community. Uh, one of the ones you, uh, notice most often when you come down here is our visual improvement program. Right now, we have four hundred, uh, hanging flower baskets and ninety side, sidewalk planters around downtown. Um, you know, that's thanks in large part to our outdoor operations, uh, crew. And actually, I just take a second to introduce, we've got a whole bunch of people here. We've got Dave and, uh, Amy and Gail from the D S I C team, and we've got Heather and Richard and Chris and Ray and Carmel, uh, missing, but all from the, the D S I C board directors here. And everybody works really hard, uh, every day to make sure that these programs and services are bested. Uh, right now, this year, we've got over one hundred hometown heroes banners that are honoring our veterans and actors, who did, who be service members from Skid Row County. And around the holidays, we have hundred and twenty plus, uh, holiday light grease and banners, uh, as well as the holiday tree that you see across from, uh, Proctors and front John's there. Uh, cleaning and maintenance is an important part of what we do. More people in downtown means there's more litter, there's more things to pay attention to, but we look at it as a good problem to have because it's people are enjoying what's in downtown. Uh, we have litter removal along, uh, once you measure all the sidewalks, about sixteen plus miles of sidewalks in all the areas here of downtown. Uh, over one hundred plus cubic yards of waste that we're removing annually, uh, two hundred and forty plus pounds of cigarette butts recycled annually, and actually, that number's probably higher because we've since added, uh, many more. You've probably seen around, we have new recycling containers for cigarette butts, and we actually collect those, turn them in, send them back to a company called Terra Recycles, recycles, filters and things like benches and infrastructure and tables, and we would love actually, uh, eventually get some of those to sort of show the action of that program. About forty cubic yards of leaves that we remove from the sidewalks each fall and snow clearing at over fifty intersections and sidewalks. And then, another major program area is our events and promotions. Skid Row Restaurant Week is an example. This year, working with the Chamber, Capital Region Chamber, we served over fifteen thousand meals, uh, at the restaurants participating. Uh, City Holiday Weekend, which happens right here in this building and right around this building, you get about six thousand up that weekend. Uh, the Soup Stroll, hugely popular event, five thousand plus attendees easily, and the Wing Walk, which is, uh, they're becoming a popular group, that brings in a good five thousand plus people to downtown. And then our general marketing and communications, uh, our website, uh, the stats, we get forty thousand unique users every year. Visitor guide map, forty thousand of those distributed up and down the thruway, berkshires the entire capital region, social media accounts, Amy's on there every day doing her stuff for over ten thousand between all of our platforms, ten thousand followers. And our weekly events newsletter that comes out every Wednesday, four thousand direct subscribers plus live sharing on Facebook and other. So, that's what the D S I C is as a 501(c)(3), but what is the Downtown Special Assessment District? That is a district that actually encompasses our service area and it's actually one of our funding mechanisms for what we do. Um, operations, uh, of this district are funded in part by the commercial properties within the Downtown Special Assessment District, which includes about five hundred and fifty, uh, parcels right now within a one square mile footprint. And as far as the, the boundaries, um, actually, this is probably easier to show them to you. Uh, we're like, uh, Union Street, uh, to the north from about Washington Avenue, from that corner up to Not Terrace, then we go all the way down Not Terrace into their avenue, we kind of josh out Hamilton and Clinton Street, and then we go up Broadway from there to connect back. Uh, we also have Erie Boulevard from Union Street down to, uh, just before the, uh, so it's a pretty significant area. So why would we be looking to expand the D S I C boundaries? Well, as I said earlier, due to the extraordinary work from Skid Row's Unified Economic Development Team, which includes, of course, the city, Metroplex, uh, county developers, private developers, um, of course, other government agencies. You all know, and we don't need to tell you, uh, I've been here over eleven years in this position, and just to see the remarkable growth happening, uh, all around downtown is, is truly something to behold. Despite all these positive changes, though, our boundaries, our service areas have remained completely unchanged since seventy-eight. And those were drawn back in the day when the D S I C was primarily an organization for taking care of parking lots. But now, as you know, Metroplex has long since purchased parking lots and our whole charter has changed to be more of a, a business improvement district with new services that I just mentioned a few moments ago. So by expanding, it ensures, again, the continuity of the services between our current district and all these amazing nearby developments, pulling it all together, unification. And the expansion position through the areas is part of unified downtown, rather than people looking at them as separate destinations, like, oh, Little Italy is its own thing, Mohawk Harbor is its own, et cetera. Like, just, you know, I think it's important for everyone here to see it as one being unified downtown that has a lot of, uh... So here's the expansion areas that we're looking at. Again, it would be Erie Boulevard from our current northern boundary, uh, going up to the new Not Street traffic circle, uh, along both sides of Union Street. I'm sorry, both sides of Erie Boulevard. Then the second area we're looking at would be that, uh, area, um, this is just, again, also above Union Street. This is the Little Italy section, which includes that little jog of, uh, North Center Street as you go around the corner. And, you know, as you know, of course, Erie Boulevard is an extremely important connector to the new Mohawk Harbor development, but Little Italy, which is such a draw with its restaurants, its festival in, uh, September, and of course, they've got the Mahco Theater there now. And that's going to become an extremely important, uh, pedestrian connector between the, uh, Mohawk Harbor and the, in the core of downtown in the coming years. So I think it's very important that we get in there now and, and help out as much as we can to get a continuous area for downtown. And then the third and final area that we're looking at right now is, uh, Broadway as it goes south from Clinton Street below Proctors, all the way along, uh, Broadway to that, um, exit five, uh, as you, as you come up I-890, so that whole corridor where, uh, Marcel's is and where they're building the new town. So to make it clear as to what, what the benefits are to the property owners who are part of the D S A D, um, as a member, at, as a participating property that pays into, into our services, you automatically receive access to all of our programs and services. And one of the things that we would be looking at doing, if this is approved, um, time for us to work with the upcoming 2020 budget, is that we would sort of pre-purchase some holiday decorations to put in these areas so the property owners could immediately see the impact of getting involved with the D S A D. And you could really see visually over the winter that, that expanded downtown through the visual, through the, uh... Uh, the properties and the businesses will be marketed as part of an expanded, vibrant, unified downtown, which means, uh, our website, our brochure, our marketing materials. And, and they'll also gain an important voice in helping the D S I C tailor our operations to specific needs. And if you're wondering what that means, a few examples that I can give you is, um, this year, you know, with so much more residential happening in Downtown Skid Row, there's more people living here, there's more people having animals here, so we had a property owner come to us and said, "We would love to be able to work with you on, uh, locating and sponsoring more dog stations for the dogs and certain things when they, uh, walk around, uh, throughout the downtown." And we thought that was fantastic idea because properties like the new Electric City Apartments over on, or State Street, they are allowing pets. And, you know, we want people to have the services and become a full service point around downtown for residents, visitors, and employees and like. That's just one small example. The cigarette butt, uh, recycling program was another suggestion that came out of some of the bars and restaurants about, you know, how we can help with that. So that's how we try to be, be responsive to folks, and if we're in those areas, we can take some action. Uh, the annual assessment that each property is, uh, pays into the operations is determined using a customized formula, and, um, this formula considers the square footage, the street frontage, and the location of a property. You know, in a nutshell, the larger the property, the larger proportional share of the overall, uh, street frontage and the, uh, square footage, sort of, of the entire district they have, so they would therefore pay proportionally. But currently, the majority of the D S A D properties currently pay about eighty-one cents per day, uh, for all of the services they receive, and that comes out to two hundred and ninety-five dollars for the entire property. And currently, we've got about fifty-eight percent of all of the current folks in our current district that are paying that, that. So what we've proposed, and I believe we sent this information out, um, the outreach to the new and the current D S A D property owners will begin immediately. This week, we're going to be doing a valance to current, posed, uh, D S A D properties, and that will include, um, an estimate of what they will be paying, like, you know, using the most current data that we have for the assessment of different properties. And if it's one of our current properties, we're going to say the difference between, here's what 2019 was, here's what it was. And by the nature of our formula, it turns out that, um, even by adding to our assessment, uh, in this year, I think we're proposing about twenty-five thousand dollars we would add because of all these new properties paying in, and the way that, uh, the formula works out is all the current properties are either going to be a hundred percent flat and not see any change, or they're actually going to see a reduction. Because we felt it was really important that we, we approached this logically, we would approach this, um, so the current property owners in the district don't feel like, um, you know, we're not thinking about them, we absolutely are, we're thinking about just creating this continuous district, we want to make it as easy as possible on current properties. So, um, we're also going to have some public information sessions if anybody is, uh, would like to come out and ask direct questions. July twenty-fourth, uh, that will be for the North J Street area. It'll be in the early evening, about five fifteen. Uh, we're looking at Mahco, we're going to have that next day or so. And August sixth, uh, we will be over, um, at Chris's office at Erie Boulevard. And then on August seventh, we're going to be over on Broadway at, uh, the Marion Insurance. So that, all the information will be in the letter. And then what I would like to do is come back at the next committee meeting, or the one coming up on August fifth, and sort of give you and I some feedback and updates on what we're for property owners at that point. And then, it's important to have a public hearing, um, that, you know, on August twelfth, and then, uh, Mahco's, um, according to this timeline, that the city council could see if we vote on that, the expansion idea for the sixth. So if anybody has any more information, you're always there, we're always available. Um, there's the phone number, you can email us at info@downtownskidrow.org or go to our website for more information as well. And, and there's our address, um, that folks could either visit us or write us any questions to us. So that is, uh, the thirty thousand foot view, but, um, again, right after we start moving forward to getting the information out, but we just thought it was extremely important to give the city council the initial overview of what were the, it's ultimate decision.
So since the August fifth comes prior to two, two-thirds of the meetings that are going to be held, I assume you'll give us a written recap after the sixth and seventh half and what's going to come here?
Yes, I would be willing, but the reason we did that is because our big building block party fundraiser is on the first, and I don't want, we don't want to give short trip anybody by doing the smaller meetings, so that's what, but yes, we'd be more than happy to, prior to the, uh, public hearing meeting, we're supposed to take place to.
That would be great. Questions, comments, important ones? What is the total square footage that you're increasing overall?
The square footage, I don't, I don't have the exact number, but I can give you the parcel numbers, uh, the amounts with the, the three new areas, um, we're looking at, it'll be ninety-nine overall new parcels, uh, seventy-four of those would be assessable parcels, which means, you know, they're, they're not residential, they don't, they fall under the ability to, to, to the, uh, to the assessment. And, uh, Erie Boulevard would have, um, twenty-one assessable parcels, uh, Broadway would have twenty-six, and then, uh, North Center Street, Little Italy would have, um, twenty-seven.
So those, those are going to be business owners, and so you did say that you'll be reaching out to them to?
Yeah, we have letters all ready to go, already mailed with all the information on. And then the other thing that we'll be sending along with that is, um, we've created an informational trifold, it's kind of an F A Q, so if people want, you know, that's going along with a separate letter that will say, here's a proposed B, here's, uh, here's all the other information. So again, we're, we're trying to be as open and transparent and give folks as much information as possible, but it's, you know, it's just the right thing to do and it's important to get the information.
So since you're, um, going to be increasing the amount of downtown that you're going to have to cover, is there also going to be an increase in the staff that you have to do then?
Yeah, primarily with the outside staff. Um, and what we've looked at is, we've kind of done our best guess estimate for, for, uh, coming up in terms of having some extra outdoor staff, because as you can understand, the cleaning, the, the snow removal, things like that, a lot of the time. So, um, those will be additional costs, and I think we've estimated, we're putting it somewhere around sixty-five thousand, but keep in mind that this year, we're, it's not going to be sixty-five thousand just tacked on top, we're actually doing quite a few cost-saving measures this year. For example, we have, uh, you know, a longtime physician, uh, who left the D S I, D S I C issue, but opted to, um, have that, you know, that physician is, uh, going into attrition in that we've split up responsibilities amongst other staff to get some cost-saving and get some efficiency, so as much as possible. Yeah, those will be some of the new costs, as best as we can, uh, estimate, but again, it is, we're always going to be finding new ways to, to, to make sure that the top line is as efficient as possible.
So I just want to say, I bring that up because we had someone who, um, came to our council meeting the last meeting, I think he had some concerns about just, uh, the, D S I C making sure that downtown was clean up, clean. So that was, uh, something I was brought to the, uh, to the rails. I just want to make sure if we're expanding it, that, that is, that's something that's key.
Yeah, we wouldn't, uh, it wouldn't be fair to the current property owners who have paid in all along to say, "We're just going to stretch current staff even further," because it's only fair if we're going to put the extra effort in that we maintain the services or improve them, as we always try to do in current districts, while just putting some resources to be there. And, you know, and some of those costs are also going to include one-time capital costs, like buying the wreaths, um, you know, anything like that. And then the annual costs will be not only the staff, but flowers, of course, you have to buy, watering, it will expense, extra gas, air and water. Some of the marketing things will not have as much of an impact, except from a design standpoint, uh, that will do sort of back, uh, wouldn't be as much as, you know, on the street exactly. Yeah.
Thank you. Other questions? Ms. Porter?
So, very exciting, Jim, as always, and I'm going to thank you for what the group does, and all the board members here appreciate all your work, obviously. Uh, do we have a, um, some kind of a draft budget or anything that you're working on, Jim? Is there any way to kind of copy your information?
Uh, yeah, we, what we've done is kind of done a draft, sort of project out, actually, in twenty-twenty-five. So if you'd like, we could, I could get that together and send that to you to get some sense of what.
And a PowerPoint, is that on your website now? Is that going to be on your website?
It is, I actually brought, printed out copies.
Oh, you did?
I did, so I'll leave those with, um...
Because I think it's very important, as council members, obviously, you know, keep us aware as well as what's happening.
And this will be also, we'll be showing at the information sessions along, you know, having, and what we'll have is, if people have any specific questions, we'll have all the details on the, the numbers.
Very, very good. Thank you, Jim.
Other questions or comments? Oh, very exciting, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Growing.
A quick question. We'll keep it.
And I believe this time, uh, I've asked for a motion to recess, government, government operations, second. All right, thank you, we are recessed.
Good, and Ms. Porterfield, if you can go into public service and utilities? We're going to call on, uh, the mayor with the smart city proof concept, is that correct? Here?
Thank you.
Well, let me give it to Mary first of all, committee to order.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to call and order public service and utilities, apparently move the agenda in, so we'll go straight to I-2.
Thank you, uh, appreciate the consideration, the council just had some representatives in, Ronus here from National Grid, Nathan's from Nice Tech. Uh, what's before the council tonight, asking your consideration and approval on the award of bid for fiber optic cable running from downtown up to Station Three? This is, uh, really our first deployment of, uh, some hardware and broad content of the smart cities. This cable, uh, while it's running to, uh, service in need and, uh, correct some deficiencies that exist within, uh, services provided out of the fire station, uh, the cable, uh, will actually have a hundred and forty-four strands of fiber in it, which will be, uh, the largest fiber that we've deployed in the city. And this will, uh, begin to lay the groundwork for capacity that be able to, uh, deliver for devices that be placed on light poles and others as a result of our, uh, rev demonstration project with, uh, National Grid. Uh, this contract tonight is for a hundred and forty-six thousand, just under a hundred and forty-six thousand. And with that, I would, uh, turn it over to Roone or Nathan or John for, uh, some of the summaries of not only this, uh, laying just this one line of fiber, but kind of the bigger picture, but this will be a, a component replicating throughout the city.
I think I'll go first. As, as into the larger city project, so as the mayor mentioned, this is a proof of concept here, those certain purposes, it was all carefully designed, people play, uh, three, three, so as we're putting it in, we're putting it in, larger, citywide project, mind and designing, uh, so, you know, just by the slab, uh, to place, and really testing the overall, that's how, uh, the city, so once it's built up, uh, essentially the infrastructure place of the switches and access lights and sensors, uh, and, uh, that, you can tell us all. And so, for Roone, I have the whole city, just a brief description of the, how this fits into that. So, so, uh, as the fiber goes along, we'll also be deploying the smart city sensors and smart lighting controllers, as we have the LED light pictures, LEDs, the most efficient light picture on the market. And we are using the rev demonstration project as a way to construct how, who does that scale and standardize this. So this city pretty much creates the design for us to deploy for all of the state and Rhode Island, Massachusetts, so we're using this as a, as a place where we really perfect rest practices for the, for the company as we deploy LED pictures. And as we deploy, uh, the best time to put smart cities, every time you take up the truck, go in, uh, single trip install, because getting a truck is very expensive for us, so we are trying to maximize the chance to go up light bulb more, and bring down the cost of those technologies for plug and save. So that's the interest for National Grid, is to reuse this as a demonstration project, just, project that would escalate the cost of the plug.
So, and just as a backup for the bid that we're here for, there were two bidders, uh, uh, shops, construction.
Questions? Ms. Porter?
So, John, we only got the second page of the bid, is it, what happened? Is there a first page of that convention?
Yeah, I have a, I have a, uh, one tab.
Already got the second page, that's all we have is right there, Jim?
That's it.
Yeah, that's just the, I mean, there'd be a page on that, it's right here, the, the page that's, uh, on that.
Okay, I think, I can, um, this is my, yeah, no, that's, you know, it's a spreadsheet that, uh, two, uh, tabs, uh, a little bit of time.
Sure? All right, I'll just give it to it, do it a second, I'll, I'll make sure you're ready.
I know that, uh, everyone didn't get page one, so it's been half canned, but are there any questions based on the, um, presentation so far, Mr. Porter?
So, can we get this other than brad form to all the council members here, so we can see this? I can't see any, always there are dots here, my friends, I hate to tell you that, so...
Those are really almost just like...
No, no, actually, there's dots, I was only kidding, there's all that. But do we have something on a brad format, a form that you can email or whatever, something that we can access this?
Uh, you have specific questions on, make it available for just normal review for Homeland Security, we would not make that information available.
It's infrastructure that really don't provide...
All right.
See, exactly. Everything we're on is going to be located, certainly, we can, that should know, well, now that you clarified that, I understand, but there is lines.
Ms. Karen, what is a little bit of a...
So, um, from a percentage of having a whole city, uh, this is going to be what percentage? What's the next step?
So this is a very small piece of fiber that we're doing as a proof of concept, as Nate, Nate mentioned, uh, excuse me, the whole city is about like ninety miles, like, the entire city fiber, this is over a mile. We're looking to make sure that we're doing works, uh, works well for, uh, investment that we said, why. Um, as far as the lighting is, uh, concerned, um, maybe you're really good, mention the schedule as we see right now for switching all of the, uh, uh, high-pressure sodium lights to LED lights.
So, so, north of, we have a lot of four thousand, four hundred light fixtures in the city, including the four lights of this. We're doing phase one and two today, or, or as we speak, uh, phase one and two is a lot of light fixtures, and we hope to have majority of installs done by end of quarter. Because it's a new technology, we want to make sure, like, want to make sure three, three times that it's the right technology, the network is reaching, so, uh, tested very deep before we deploy to the next phase in the city. So the lighting will be done in three phases, so first phase is happening now, the next phase is twenty-twenty, and the third phase is twenty-twenty-one, and the time we've got the, the better practices as we go along, as we, and, you know, just kind of practice.
So we'll look to concurrently expand on the fiber installation as, as, uh, we lower it up in the city as well.
Well, fiber, fiber is a, uh, a small percentage, it's connected to the fire station, it's really connected, uh, to fire, uh, water, the city building, it's literally one of the six or seven, like, six places to test everything, uh, while, uh, there is, uh...
Ms. Porozo?
I noticed part of the bid was removal of, uh, fire alarm wiring and removal of traffic signal wiring. I assume there's some sort of, uh, bridge that will, won't allow, I mean, is that the old wiring for the full boxes?
Yeah, the reason, what we're doing is, is the way we design this, it has this, uh... What we're doing is, is the way we design this is have this, uh, space on all the telephone run. So that's the perfect place for us to put the fiber. So we don't want to leave it there yet. Done. So we're gonna put the fiber up and then the whole wire gets down.
So they'll be knowing. Well, the other, the, 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 um, fire poles, we don't use anymore anyway, but I would assume traffic signal wise, there won't be any interruptions or, or.
No, it's all old stuff. That's, uh, individual, uh, whatever. Nothing will come down until everything is active on the fiber. The other thing just to mention is that, you know, what we.
John, because I'm having a little.
Sorry. When Nathan was talking about with how this will connect, uh, fire station three, we're also looking to do that at fire station four in the Bureau of Service, which Bureau of Service is one of the last pieces that we're paying, uh, lease lines for. So once we get that fiber connected there, we'll have to pay that lease line plus as well. So it's a, a very multi, uh, 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 faceted, uh, installation, which will allow us to do about the same time.
Mr. Porterfield?
Thanks, Mr. Porterfield. So, uh, obviously the two estimates, um, the one is, is almost double the other. And that's why I was just trying to see with the bidding sheets here. So it looks like the bidirectional fiber test and the power meter test are the major, major differences. Can you explain to me, and are we comfortable with that? I mean, you've got a bid here of a hundred ninety-four thousand, nine thousand. And then fifty-five thousand, I'll look at it, nine hundred.
Those, those shops lines are aligned with industry standards.
Really?
I don't know how the other bidders.
Great. What we, what we expect?
And if you were to take their, those two numbers and put them down for shops, was they being accurate?
Well, that's, so, but again, we're very confident with the testing and everything, what they have to do, obviously.
We use shops, uh, many times, uh, in different projects, uh, in the city, so.
Any other questions, Ken Tucker?
The other point of general information, though, we have to pay for this when we do the work. Looking to charge this out of the, uh, money that, uh, somebody member, Santa Barbara, had lined up. It was a million dollars that he had, uh, put in place for that. So that we'll eventually charge it back against that. So it actually won't come out of the city funds.
Okay. A little bit.
Second.
A little favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, gentlemen. Very good. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move up to, uh, item one, the authorized commission of finance to this, uh, past extreme weeks winter recovery funding, uh, in the amount of a hundred seventy-four thousand fifty dollars into the correct fund. It says, Mr. Wallen?
I'm gonna cover this for Mr. Wallen today. And it just as a title layout, uh, extreme winter recovery funding that's, uh, they'll, it's looking to, uh, presently accept.
Okay. Are there any questions? Second. A little favor?
Hi.
Okay, item three, discussion for the Verizon agreement. Mayor McCarthy?
Uh, actually, I was looking, uh, for discussion on this, but actually to adopt a resolution authorizing this to other, to a, uh, license agreement. There's a significant, a general overview. There may be some questions that council would raise that would be dealt with in executive session. Uh, the, part of this, the point we're doing, looking also position the city for what's called five G technology, which is the next generation of cellular service. Uh, today where you have cell phones, you see the big towers that are located in different places. Five G will move to a format where there will be smaller towers, but they will be more free. And, uh, there's been, uh, some publicity, not to recent past, where there was been debate on what's the value or what is the ability of a municipality to charge for the attachment of those small towers to city fixtures. Most cases are the light posts. Uh, the FCC rule that the maximum amount that a community can charge per fixture is two hundred and seventy dollars. There's still some debate on that, uh, actual litigation that's going on. What I'm asking the council to do is where we're talking, uh, specifically tonight with, uh, Verizon, but with also the other cell providers, is to be able to enter into agreements with them. Uh, as Roone alluded to, the city has roughly five thousand light poles. Rev demonstration project is dealing with about forty-four hundred, uh, give or take a few. And there's five hundred, uh, light poles that the city, the cell phones. Uh, why those numbers don't quite add up is through some decorative fixtures, uh, got the Central Parkway, Wendell Avenue, Randolph Road, that aren't addressed directly in, uh, the rev demonstration project. But what I would ask the council to do is, uh, adopt a resolution that will allow us to go forward with Verizon and laying the groundwork also for other, uh, telecom, uh, providers. Uh, it, what, looking to submit to the council, and I thought it was going to be before you, apparently wasn't, is Syracuse has entered into an agreement and then Acypse has entered into basically the same agreement. Uh, so they've hashed out kind of variances in it. And for New York State to be competitive, for communities to be competitive, is to have somewhat of a standard agreement so that a provider doesn't have to go to every community and negotiate a completely different deal and to have, uh, package that is acceptable, uh, in terms of both what municipality is looking for and then what the provider is looking for. So our, uh, ability is really to negotiate on those roughly five hundred light poles, what our, uh, fixture rate would be. And, uh, again, it's capped at the federal level, two hundred and seventy dollars. So some communities will make arguments that it's worth more federally. You're prohibited from getting more than that. With the exception of if you can show that actual costs exceed the two hundred and seventy dollars, then you can charge, uh, whatever the portion amount is. On the other side of it, where you have, uh, light poles that are standard, uh, fairly easy accessible, uh, that you're supposed to charge less than two hundred and seventy dollars, uh, to reflect the actual cost. So what, uh, would ask the council, if you could get the draft to them, that they would, uh, adopt a uniform package that would allow me to negotiate with Verizon. In this case, to do that forward for, uh, small cell. They're indicating their willingness to start to move in a really expedited fashion, put in some of the, uh, small cells, which will have greater capacity, draw some of this light, some of the other things.
Ms. Porazo, a little time.
So, so this is income for the city?
Yes.
Essentially, and is there any costs associated with this agreement in front?
Uh, there's no direct cost other than paying how, question be asked, if we put this in, we can still pay for our cell phone bills that we have through the city. So there, there's no fee that the city would have to pay as a result of this.
And where, uh, I may have missed it, I apologize if I did, but where are the other carriers on this at this point? Is anybody else entering into this game?
Oh, yes, everybody wants to be a talking tool. But Verizon, in terms of, in fact, some of that, I should probably go into executive session. Tell you where the specific negotiations are.
Yeah, I would like that, uh, because it seems like to lock in right now with one company, still having conversations.
Not locking in one company, setting up an agreement with one company.
Okay.
And then as other ones would come forward, this would pretty much be the model.
So it's not exclusive?
Correct.
Yeah, I would, I would like.
Some of the, it's the nature of this also, when you enter into one company, the companies share facilities based on demand. So that, the example is, you may have Verizon, I may have AT&amp;T, but when I call you, you know, we don't know that the signal goes through, phone call and messages. So they will share, co-locate resources on a particular small cell.
So, uh, answer a few questions.
Uh, my last question is, how long is the agreement binding?
Syracuse, twenty, twenty years.
And any provision in the twenty-year agreement for an increase in payment to the city on any kind of a scheduled basis or is two hundred and seventy bucks set for twenty years?
Set federally, but there's aspects of that that I've discussed in the executive session.
Okay.
So, I have similar question, but do you have any idea what potential revenue could be for this? Have you got any numbers on it?
Under, this would be if they put one on every pole, we have roughly five hundred poles, it would be two hundred and seventy dollars. That's probably not going to cap that.
Ms. Porazo?
But it comes along with cost too, right? So the two hundred and seventy dollars offsets the cost for their back.
But now between the cost.
You had said that there were costs associated, like, that, that, the, the payment was to offset the cost to the city that we would incur from the, to run it up.
Well, we have put that light pole up. So we have bought these light poles that are outside of city hall. We have an investment. They want to put an attachment on it. They would have to put, uh, maybe additional electrical conduits to it. But that two hundred and seventy dollars would offset our cost for maintaining that pole.
Is that, and I'm sorry, what is the amount of time on that? Is it annually? It's months?
Mr. Riggie?
I don't know if anybody else received an email, five days ago this month. That's an intense series of concerns about five G. Five G technology as well as, of course, carcinogenic effects from wireless microwave radiation. And there's really no part of this.
There's a lot of discussion that it's linked to the, the four G deployment. At the same first, uh, started with the radio, light bulbs.
Don't understand that. Is there any real fear from this? We have enough cancer going around. I don't want to put in a horn to any of the cancer.
Yeah. That's, that's what I'm asking. Supports the fear. In fact, even though in the Syracuse agreement, they carry a insurance policy dealing with medical ask.
So what we covered is cancer.
Somebody would answer, prove that it was by the play that they have assumed Verizon.
Give, go into a detail.
Some of the questions that Porazo raised about some of the ongoing negotiations that would, uh, be better off in executive session. Backup would ask.
All right, then we'll. So, um, we'll do our last, uh, agenda, and then we'll last, uh, one, the ceremony with, with pushing for the completion of prayer by Prince Frog and T P Productions, Ms. Porazo.
Yep, so, uh, the Saturday night. Great, then, many, many years of making very uh, and, uh, it's just not about the movie, right? Right? On the very high side. Uh, and so it's, the movie certainly raises the awareness of that, all based on true stories from some of the teen pregnancy experiences. It's the start, right, of raising awareness to this. But in the meantime, it's also, uh, an amazing tour by Prince Frog. Asked and told by us productions and I think to do it. Amazing establishment.
A little favor?
Hi. Hi.
Thank you.
Call to order public, um, safety. We have two items. In the form an accessory.
Mayor, council members, the uh, each year, past the years, we've done a uniform bid for the fire department. They receive uniforms that the city provides and then they also want the ability to buy their own uniform pieces to replace once they give more. Just have extra. So we did a bid, uh, companies that downloaded bid specification. Got twenty-four companies, only two responded. Low responder was municipal, uh, seat. Lot of business with them, uh, for equipment, fire department, turn out here. So for safety, so. They're putting together a website that, uh, department members can their uniform supplies, which will come with the catches and the and is that they're a little bitter. That in mind, the amount will vary based on number of items that each member. So we do have amount of, uh, the cost of each item, but for a total contract at this point, just that in mind, would like to pass the council. Contract with the municipal emergency.
Second. Call a favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Item is discussion has to do with safety features and security at the helm. So I recess. Second.
So let's do health. You want to do health and rec?
Yes. Health and rec. Here, and it's the baseball club. Three.
It's connected to the old timers. Kids. I think they are scan that we have to date. So I think this aspect we need to kind of re. Baseball. Six, so this is a good five-year program and it'll be no bust. Also be the scout. Folks. So I doing, the city. Uh, we open that trust and agency. Be sure a lot of the months in. Recognize their work. Appreciate.
Question. Call a favor? For. Call the favor. Governor. Senator Bronson, yes.
Cause I'm good. Um. Have a. Shen for the two thousand nine. Haven Maven. Crow. Metro with the Maven. Um, and. Uh, two. Favor. Final review of the local law banning use. Drives.
So I'm. Final meeting because we did a fair amount. Containing. Actually. The things that we had discussed. Enforcement. I. Conversation with Chris Long. He can send out, so.
So based on the comments, previous. Questions of the law. The definitions. A little bit. Additional flesh out, I should say. Based. Beverage provider. Things along those lines. As far as the pro. Sold that commercial establishment. Met. Homes, which is. And. That have been. Added on. Go out early in October. Basically telling. Those that the city. Law. Certainly not. Um, the order. City website. Would be. Information. Trying to get. Various community members. Organizations. On January. All those businesses again, basically telling them. The past. The order. Fill in. Know that the prohibition is now. And where. Not some. Which we could. Please. Website. Stickers for businesses. To put on their doors or. Calls. Yeah. You know, based upon what some other community. We didn't reimagine. By any stretch. Uh, business. About that we just talked about. It's important. Um, there's. Blank faces. Department are. Indicated would be not, wouldn't. Um. Handle it relatively easily. But uh, we. Perhaps in the. List. I believe. Addressed. The. Maybe just.
Sorry. Around it, but. Another. Entity. That would be. As opposed to code. When we talked about. I don't know, I have to look, go back and look my notes. To this.
I think the best way to handle this would be use because. So the. Correlation with when they go into the. Not. Left for.
But when I. That. We go to the end. Someone calls up, if I call up and I see that they see you. ABC diner, then they, the code enforcement will then go to that place. Am I understanding that correctly? Paul O'Malley?
Yeah. Blank faces, right? Like they would on.
And. Initially, there might be a fair number of these turned in and then over time they. Die down.
So in terms. How would we prioritize? The other thing that concerns the code enforcement that. They have to take care of was the primary. If there's a body in the. As opposed to if somebody's. So. Concerns me how this gets prioritized if code enforcement is the.
Mr. Long had no concerns about handling. Zero.
Well. It's easy. Those questions. Code enforcement, because I was. Clearly are. Other questions?
Back on our local businesses, other than the two or three that. I know our request is trying to serve him here, work with the local chamber. Downtown pit. We've only heard from three businesses here and I understand they're all four, but. Hundreds of businesses in the city is connected and I just don't feel we're hearing their. Or urgency to move on this and I just want to hear their input from the other. Our public hearing. That we just. Come to the rail and this is going to affect the entire city. It's connected, you look at. I'm not going to argue. I just want to make sure our businesses know what we're doing. Both. Of a county. Uh, or even a state. Take this. Uh, and I understand. We have to start somewhere. A lot of times it starts with local municipality of the city. Things to be. Just. Too tough. I want to hear from our businesses. I need to hear their feedback.
Yes, Mr. Paul.
Well, it's interesting. At the last meeting, we, we had, well, nobody showed up for the public hearing, so we can pass it. So when do we make this distinction? V people, one. And now people. Have major concerns. Those that did were in favor. So why are we drawing the line in the sand on this one, but with other stuff we're not? And you're. You don't. This is either. Um, there hasn't been. And. That did come.
Take a page. Earlier to say. To impose additional costs on our businesses. Them and get their feedback. I think, I mean. Every public hearing is different, every, every, every order. Does have. A cost impact on our. And I agreed with Mr. Koder the last time he brought it up that that's. And it really is the click of a button, right? To through mail chamber, survey monkey or whatever. Or GSIC to send something out for us, sure the changes. I agree that that's a little bit of a missing.
First of all, you're assuming, you're assuming. There might not be a cost. You don't need to have a straw. At home typically, no. So why do you have to use one of? So you're assuming a cost that might not be there. Again. When have we ever? Under. Your art. But we never use that parameter. So, um, you know, this cost factor isn't necessarily there.
Could. Don't often pass like. Cost to a significant number of businesses in the city. So to compare apples to apples, you know, and should we gather? Should gather information? I don't. In, in doing that. I, I don't, but I, you know, listen, I'm. Just Mr. Koder and I who think gathering that information is important, although it's a moot point, right? Um, but. Does anybody else have any opinion? Well, first of all, I don't necessarily think that compared. I know people who. Kind of concerned about the glass, quite frankly, I mean, that's. But for some people, like I don't want to put my lips on a glass in a public place, so. Feel that way, so I don't. Would do. Would like for us to reach out to our colleagues. To see if we can get some buy-in so that we can. Why, if possible. Be so much easier to, for people. Cities connected and where this all. It just makes to me a lot of sense for it to be. State why which that'd be a. They're left to try to at least talk to our county to see if they could, we could work on this together. Mr. Rigg.
As far as input from all the, all the businesses around. Pretty well advertised and paid. Press and. Night from the other businesses about that. But I also think I feel much more comfortable with this, this county. By itself with it. With county, I have a lot of other things, so. With this. They would be. Because. Boundaries of the city aren't that big and again, so they could go Rotterdam, you know, which is right on. Quite a few. Neighborhoods and, you know, get a straw, drop it in the street in Skidnack today, so who gives. For that. Right is the way to go and that's where I feel more comfortable moving forward. But as far as people knowing about it, I think a lot of people. Question about that. Got one. And I didn't get any feedback. Not saying there.
But find example of. We're close to it, right? You know, I had a neighbor. Fire. Was like fireworks and so I walked down and. Illegal. The police, you know, right? Well, but I bought them at Walmart. Didn't buy them at Walmart in Skidnack. And he said, no, I bought them in Amsterdam. He said, well, it's connected to the county, they're at least. But I don't understand, I bought them. Right there, you know? So it's that. Close, but. It's, it's. I, I. Letter was giving all the resources as to where to buy all the business. Um, and, and really solid. I guess, I guess where we are is do we have. Code or are we still not? We are majority wise. It's the impression that we're not comfortable where we are. It's. Fair enough.
I'd just like to respond. I mean, how many times? And the county has followed us afterwards. On several occasions, fireworks. Um, there was, I can't remember the other, but this. So why not here? Um, and I understand the partnering with the. But we've had the lead on a number of occasions and let's do it again. And in terms of the residential. When you're eliminating the. Classic. Then it took five six draws. So yes, some straw. Some other often. But. Groups of reducing the environmental impact. Uh, within the city. Commercial piece.
Just on that. Point, but the county was first in allowing. The smart. And so. Was. But that's, I just feel more comfortable with this a county wide, which is like, and I'm not willing to go forward, but I. About that piece of policy, that's the way I feel about, not that I am against it or anything, but I think it makes. This is. Not just.
So I guess. So Ms. Wilson, are you comfortable moving forward with the legislation as it says, Mr. Ferrin?
Yes.
Mr. Koder?
Yes. No.
And I am not as well. So I don't think. Ahead. And. To make this work. I looked through. We have stores that, so have we addressed how we talked to the different stores and sell.
There's two letters that are attached.
Price child. I'm talking about Hanford. I'm talking about stores that sell drugs, like many, many, many.
They would certainly get the letters and would certainly be reached out to as well.
Because that's what he, that's, I will say they're going to. I think, I think it's going to be, it's definitely going to be an impact on the revenue and their, how they order and, and all that stuff. So that's a, and sorry I did not notice that before, but that's a group that really needs to be made aware of that. Six draws anymore, so. Or, or how does that even work out? So, um. Something that we would need to. Add and see how, what the impact is on. Those type of details. But I don't even know how you conclude that because what does the person now have to prove that they have something at home? They use the force your own order to buy, I don't. I'm saying in the stores, you would say. I'm saying. It's in the store. I, I don't even know. Ever talk about that. That's, that's. That's. Um, okay, so I see two. Forward. Uh, that is. Working with, even, even if we did. I see. Blame of feedback. We have a, we have a very concentrated amount of restaurants in. Area, so even if we just started with them to get some feedback from them. And then the other thing is outreach to the county to see if the county would consider this as a countywide. Where we're at. So, did I capture it properly? Yes. Right, so we'll put this on for two weeks and see where we are at that. Um, and then. Uh, the discussion of regarding a moratorium on member stores in the city of Skidnack. So. When we were last here at the committee table, we were talking about. Turn of the new liquor store proposed on Albany Street and council. Uh, the majority of the council agreed to send a letter to the S L A expressing the. Neighborhood. Up in the surge with the liquor store. Have done. That. And we also talked about. and we also talked about the last, when this initially came up as well as at the last committee meeting, working with to work on some sort fail safe method avoid this kind of situation in the future. So Mr. Koder and I, Matt with development earlier today, they are indeed a variety of ideas with regard to zoning, but perhaps special where the case may be, but they are not ready to present and they're still doing research and as you imagine, it's a delicate process because we want to make sure we're not being discriminatory of business in general in the city and we want to make sure right. One of the things that came up in discussion ability of a law what they were comfortable with was up 180 to do the research. Come to the council and talk to us about what what we would come with, what would be good practice going forward, also obviously looking at best municipalities. If the work was done prior to the days, we would simply lift the board then the which I don't want to call restrictions So according the various levels of comfort with that is so, yeah, so questions coming. Yes, Ms. Lewis.
So I did have a conversation with corporation counsel and, you know, do and if it would be prudent for us to actually this to determine what other cities have done, whether they use a special use or around to accommodate issues we may have. And I would like us to see if we can move forward along in that to see could do some research for us.
Well, that's the research that's being outside developed.
But I think corporation counsel will actually, you know, engage outside counsel, outside, outside individuals that understand what we're trying to get done better. That's
That's what's happening in development department and for Mr. Palatico to assist in that. Anything that they're doing, but I'm sure he can add a different perspective. We don't and put this a great
Don't you pick your own fan? That's the first question. For this thing, wait, I'm blocking right in your ear. You all, okay, that's fan, that's. Now, I know we're a smart city. I came from Lucha.
Yes.
I would like for us to move forward with moratorium. There's been discussions regarding the code 44 Albany Street and some of the council members have chosen to support that, you know, and I have to say we hope we'd had support from all the council, given the outcry from the public and as you all know, the in that particular neighborhood. And Eastern were saying, you know, similar things, everybody's trying and that's not necessarily a business that anyone's ever asked for when you ask for like, what would you like? No one came up with, I'd like a liquor store on that corner. That hasn't happened. So I'd like to see us move forward with the moratorium and talk about zoning because in neighborhoods that are more we see are small corner stores, we see liquor stores, we see pawn those kind of predatory businesses that impact the neighborhood negatively. So I'd like to see us to move forward with the moratorium and see how we can have a limited number of businesses that are less than, that don't really lend to the outcomes in neighborhoods.
Yes, Mr. Koder and I also talked about with development we might roll these stores so to apply some similar criteria in because that's something we talked about at this table. Rumor is, you know, again, around not being discriminatory toward business pulling out business. This still fair in certain criteria was met, so if, let me ask this question instead. Is anyone to putting a moratorium in place until development can flesh out the
So I have a question. And I apologize, I've kind of been off the grid a little bit with some personal issues, but I thought these were already
Is what would be the next conversation that we would have comfortable going forward with the moratorium? Would we put it in would catch in the thing, which is one store right now, which is Eastern Avenue? Again, he all the voice from the neighborhood, say. Or would we put the moratorium in place for those moving forward? The, this, this Eastern Avenue not been approved by the planning commission as of the Albany Street is this
When, when do they have their, I thought it was under I thought it was under assault, I thought it was under general
So other opinions with regard to the possible moratorium?
Yeah, and again, Mr. Rose, you hit on the button. 180 days maximum. Originally, we're talking about 90 days or whatever. We just thought that if you did a maximum 180 days, they got their plea before that would be outside and again, we wouldn't have but again, I think the neighborhoods have spoken quite they've come to the rail, we've got emails, we've got phone calls. And I think it's just an issue that our Kristin Dadi and Abby are certainly going to work on and I'm certainly going to have to work very closely with our local department as well. So I think it's a given that they will be working together. And she also indicated as well, the argument, look at other municipalities New York State regions that are very similar to the size of and the population that we serve here to make sure we really get this thing right. And I think it's important, we've been talking about it for how many years? Same with convenience stores. I think it's a good positive approach. Let's get it right and 180 days
No, it's Mr. Mink.
I agree. We have to yeah. Your point is that
The hue and crying in this case was loud and clear that people don't want it. So again, that's who we respond to, this will get some breathing to try to keep this at least that day. People can get their wishes, that's where they're living and those are their neighborhoods. Peace and as best I can. There's enough, you know, issues going on.
And I guess I will also ask want to put this in place immediately and catch what's out there in the net from moving forward or do we want to let the pending application go through its process on the other side?
Meaning immediately is this going to catch it and that's the Albany Street?
No.
No, that was right.
Just Eastern Avenue.
Immediate is still in the fourth thing, that's what doesn't happen again.
So I guess I need to know if I have enough support. Is the failure you get support and this is, is that something
I don't want us to end up being more difficult for us to do business in the city. Eastern Avenue is revitalizing. I think it's been absolutely wonderful and I will go back to, my husband's warehouse is on Eastern Avenue. We were trying to purchase the warehouse. This is 12 years ago, very close to 15 years ago. Nobody in the neighborhood wanted us there. Quite frankly, it's turned out to be one of the best neighbors they've ever had. So just because somebody is opening up a business and we're stereotyping that business, it's still legal, it's still viable and, you know, I don't want us to to get a black eye around, you know, Schenectady is now going to be more difficult to business than that's my, that's my biggest concern.
I was actually on the boarding, the Board of Zoning Appeals and it was unanimously passed because
It was, but outcry
There was concern. And you addressed it beautifully or addressed it beautifully and we have all the felt comfortable. Mr. Koder, do you have input you'd like to add?
No.
Mr. Koder?
All of the moratorium affected me.
And Mr. Paul, do you have any comments?
I'm fine with the moratorium. I do agree with Ms. Lewis somewhat in the sense of we don't want, I don't think we should be getting into the business and picking who wins and loses. And that's for the neighborhood. If they support the business, they'll stay in business. If they don't support go out of business. And once we start going down this road, I think it's a dangerous avenue, but I will support this particular time being.
Yep, and I understand that concern and that's why I think, you know, having a process for businesses to meet criteria is a fair and equitable way to do it so that we're not cherry picking and we're not saying you, but not you, but the process will apply to everyone across the city. And if they meet the criteria, then they open a business. So I think that's a fair way to do it. So in the meantime, at least until we get those good practices in place, best practices in place not happen. Our neighborhoods, some of our neighborhoods that show very much, you know, high level concern, Ms. Porterfield? Okay, then I will ask for a motion to put in place up to a 180 day moratorium on liquor stores, not talk about putting these liquor stores. And any second?
Second.
All is in favor? Thank you. And anything else to come for government operations? Second. All is in favor? Thank you. Your turn.
The city planning and development is up next and Mr. Palatico is going to review the sidewalk improvement petitions.
I don't know why my name is at half that. I think it's just the week in between a public hearing and
Okay. All right. So the discussion around Hewitt Street?
I would actually hold this for two weeks. I would like
All right. The other is a sale of property that needs to go into executive session. Ask for
Did we get any updates on when we tried to tell the central email? It's a house we sold in 2013. They've been in default It was supposed to be in foreclosure. It's not in foreclosure. Every time I go to my doctor, I hear first issue, what's next?
Being certain to whether or not they were not funds we sent enforcement out by this is an I mean, according to code enforcement, they did everything they were required
Sold something.
As far, as far as I can help. You know, obviously I didn't go out to check there was one issue with a vehicle that was on, on the property that didn't have registration and all of those ones, but everything else looked okay.
That's not what this person is saying, so that lives that story. We might argue that, you know, the places that's where it is. And across the street, for some reason, we're dumping there, the city's dumping there. I mean, this woman's pretty upset. I don't blame her because it was a park, not dumping C and D that sounds I don't Mayor, can you look into this a little bit? For this is
You have to
No, no, you need to take this to that and Sergeant Rachel because this person just really has I don't blame her. She says she pays $8,000 a year taxes and she's living next door to the homes. Can't blame somebody for playing Thanks for just calling down.
I make a motion to recess.
Second.
All favor. All
For the claims, we have two tax certs and we have the pairs versus city of Schenectady discussion. Anything else that doesn't belong in executive session? All executive session.
I make a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
I would ask that you make a motion from National Red and I think it's safe for that small, small discussion. We are
But they, but no, you recess. What do you recess?
I mean, I think the mayor's I don't know.
You had a couple of questions.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Do you want to recess claims and I'll so then you can go. Yes, we're in executive session, so I'll make a motion to recess. I make a motion to recess.
Yeah. I